Good evening, Chair. Cause order Legislative Session Day 24021. I would ask you to please join us for standing for the pledge, followed by the opening prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your promise to be with us always. We pray that you would deepen our comprehension and broaden our thinking so each decision we make may be beneficial to all. Lord, with the summer season upon us, we ask that you continue to watch over our children, keep them safe and out of harms way. We thank you for the opportunity to come together in these chambers, keep our hearts and minds open, bless us and guide us as we continue to conduct the people's business. We ask all these things in your most holy name, Lord. Amen.
Amen.
General Number Four, Presentation of Proclamations, Fawston High School. Mr. Pennman.
Yep.
Could you come forward, please?
Gentlemen.
Keep going. All the way across.
Dionne.
Hi.
Ladies and gentlemen, from the Fawston Lacrosse Program of Fawston High School, I just want to congratulate you all on your state championships, your hard work, your dedication. I think the ladies had three years in a row going against Liberty and finally got the win this year, so congratulations. Coach Moll, I think it's three championships in a row, actually one off and then, you know, so, but that's a outstanding accomplishment and it doesn't happen. I know the parents are important and the kids are important, but the coach, Coach Moll, Coach Palco, great job. We hope that you continue to coach these ladies and gentlemen for years to come so we can bring back some more championships to Fawston. So with that, we have a proclamation on behalf of the Harford County Council on your extraordinary accomplishment. So let me give this to you, Coach Moll. Do you want to read the proclamations?
Yeah.
Oh, it's, yeah.
I don't have one. Okay.
Be it hereby known that the County Council of Harford County, Maryland, on this 18th day of June 2024, recognize and congratulate Fawston High School Women's Lacrosse Team for their outstanding achievement in the 2024 Class 1A State Tournament. We commend the team and the coaches for their exceptional dedication, hard work, and sportsmanship. Their perseverance has earned them the title of 2024 Class 1A State Champions. This championship win is a testament to the determination and unwavering commitment to excellence both on and off the field. We wish them continued success in all their future endeavors, both in sports and in life. Fawston High School Men's Lacrosse Team for their outstanding achievement in the 2024 Class 1A State Tournament. We commend the team and the coaches for their exceptional dedication, hard work, and sportsmanship, which led them to secure their third Class 1A State Title in four years. This remarkable accomplishment is a testament to their unwavering commitment to excellence both on and off the field. We wish them continued success in all their future endeavors, both in sports and in life.
Thank you, Tony. With that, I just want to turn it over to the coaches just for say a few words, if you don't mind.
I want to say thank you to the council for awarding us with this honor. It was a great season, super proud of the girls, and couldn't have been prouder to have this award shared with the men and their experiences because these kids, they did a lot of training off the season and Coach Moll and I have a saying, "One program, we are one Fawston Lacrosse," and it's really nice to have that recognized.
Not to reiterate too much of what Coach Palco said, but you know, one of our mantras is "one program" and the fact that we're able to share in things like this is really cool and, you know, thank you very much for this recognition. It's kind of makes everything, all the hard work worth it. Thank you.
And I think it's only happened one time before, in 2012, where the women's and the men's program both won, so congratulations, great work.
Okay, let's take a group photo. Can everybody here, the size, shout out, please? I'm going to have everybody in the front row take a couple steps this way, center up a bit, and good. Perfect. Mr. Riley, can you take a step this way just a tad? Thank you.
Always one who messes it up.
Surprise you made it.
All right.
All right. Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Coach, congrats. Coach, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Great job, guys.
Ladies, congrats.
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 Good shake.
Good shake.
Good shake.
General Item Number Five, Consideration of Petitions, Applications, Appointments, and Nominations. Council Appointments Police Accountability Board may have a motion, please.
Council President, I move to approve the reappointments of John Landbeck, Allison Eymhoff, and Vicki Jones.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved and seconded to approve the reappointments to the Police Accountability Board. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I have the utmost confidence in the members that are being reappointed, but as a member of the Sheriff's Office, I am going to abstain from this vote.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Anyone else? I do want to acknowledge the fact that we still have a vacancy in the upcoming board. We plan on advertising for that this summer, beginning in July, I believe, Ms. Harris, is that what we said, in July? So with that, anyone else to comment? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Abstain.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being six votes in affirmative, one abstention, the appointments are hereby approved. See Mr. Landbeck in the office or in the chambers? Thank you, sir, for your service.
Thank you.
Executive Appointments Commission for Women may have a motion.
Council President, I move to approve the appointments of Diane Senstak, Deborah Schreiber, Karen Chismar, Teresa Walter, and Catherine Navatney to the Commission for Women.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved and seconded for the new appointments to the Commission on Women. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bennett.
Council President, I just want to first say I have nothing against these appointees. In fact, I know some of them and I looked over all their applications and I view them as qualified to be on this board, but in talking with the outgoing chair, who reached out to all of us and speaking with her on the phone today, just concerned over the fact that there wasn't any communication between the chair, or as far as the chair knows, anybody who currently serves on the board. Also concerned about the disproportionate number of members who will now come from two districts, out of the six districts in our county, when, you know, the goal of the board is to have representation from everywhere in the county, and just concerned over the fact that none of the appointees recommended by the chair or vice chair of the board were considered in this process. I know it's something that was concerning and upsetting to the current chair of the board that in this process, they didn't have any communication with the county executive. So I just wanted to make sure I voiced those concerns publicly.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Mr. Pennman.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to echo those concerns. I know Diane's here. I have a deep respect for Diane, Teresa Walters, the utmost respect for Teresa Walters. I think she would do a fine job, but I think there needs to be a discussion, discussion going forward on kind of how this thing was put together. So I'm hoping that takes place. So I have concerns over voting in favor of this appointment, not necessarily these people at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Anyone else? I will say that I did also respond back from Ms. Repert's comments to the administration. They responded back to my office with explanation and I'm prepared to move forward. And I agree, the ladies that we see here are outstanding and will do an outstanding job for the county. It is unfortunate, there is a question, but at this point in time, I'm prepared to move forward. So if there's no other comment, Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
No.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
No.
There being five votes in affirmative, two in the negative, the appointments are hereby approved, and I do see Ms. Senstak in the audience. Is there anyone else here? I'm sorry.
Navatney.
Navatney, thank you. Be stand, please, and be recognized. Thank you. Plumbing Advisory Board may have a motion.
Council President, I move to approve the reappointments of Harry Newcomer and Stephanie and Stephen Bogan, and the appointments of Richard Neutz, Justin Wasikewicz, and Gregory Schott to the Plumbing Board.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved and seconded to approve the reappointments and new appointments. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in affirmative, zero in a negative, the appointments are hereby approved. Six special presentations, council. It's our pleasure to have Ms. Angela Rose here for the United Way of Central Maryland's Region Advisory Board of Harford County, and whenever you ladies would like to come forward.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I'll let Jen start.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Carlson. I work with the United Way of Central Maryland, and I manage a lot of our Harford County efforts, including helping manage our Harford County Run Board. Thank you, guys, for having us out. Just to tell you a little bit more about our work and what we do, especially over the last year, we've done some amazing work.
So as of July 1st, I'll be serving as the Harford County Run Board Chair and very excited to talk about what we have been able to accomplish this past year, but first want to tell you a little bit about what United Way does in Harford County. So United Way, Central Maryland, makes communities more livable, opportunities more equal, families more stable, and lives better for those who call Central Maryland home. They focus on what's needed, where it's needed, investing in programs and making a difference in Baltimore and the surrounding regions. And a little bit about what a run board is. That stands for Region United Network Advisory Board, and I'm very proud of the board that we have in place in Harford County. We have representation from the Sheriff's Office, the public school system, Care First, Upper Chesapeake, The Chamber, Harford Mutual. We have a great board and we have accomplished quite a bit in the past year to directly support Harford County. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jen.
So just a few of the things we've done in the last year. We hosted Project Connect at the Epicenter in Edgewood, where we serve 450 of our neighbors, bringing much-needed resources to their door, basically, haircuts, health exams, free vision exams, and eyeglasses, dental screening. The little young man in the picture, he got his very first haircut at Project Connect, so that was a special day for his family and the volunteers involved. We have invested over $110,000 with the Changemaker Challenge and neighborhood grants, helping smaller nonprofits and local changemakers bring much-needed change to the area. And then some of the stuff I'm most proud of is just supporting our local students at Joptown High School, Magnoli Middle, Magnoli Elementary School, putting in care closets for those students so they can come in, get a refresh if they need to. A lot of their students are struggling every day to make ends meet with their families, so this care closet helps them come in and just kind of feel a little bit like a normal kid. They can get some fresh clothes, deodorant, some personal body wipes, and that was one of our big projects. We also did a Martin Luther King Day project where we supported the students with personal hygiene bags, and that was for the special ed students at Joptown High School, so they could have a lesson in how to take care of themselves and then take those supplies home to practice as homework. One of the biggest things that we have going on right now is Neighbors United in Aberdeen, and this is a three-year initiative. They just finishing up year one, where they're listening to the neighbors, talking, knocking on doors, figuring out what they need, what changes they see in their community, and then they're putting in place in the next year, figuring out what those problems are and putting solutions in place to help these folks create solutions themselves so that when we step out, they can carry on this program on their own. So we have on-the-ground partners with N-Step. We just kind of are coaches in the background cheering them on, and a lot of our run board members are providing their talents as well to support. So Mary Beth Stapleton at Harford County Public Schools has been a huge asset in connecting our on-the-ground team to the community school specialists, so that's been really helpful. And then just in case all of you don't know, it's not on the screen, but 211 is a huge initiative in our region and nationally you can call. So anybody should know about 211. It's something you can call if you need help with housing, food, medical care, transportation. You dial 211 and you can get access to resources that are right in your area. So anybody can call, and even if you have something you want to donate and you're not sure where to donate, you could call 211. If you see someone out on the street, you know, you can help them by telling them about 211, too. So that's a huge thing that we have.
We want to thank you for your time and let you know that you will be invited to some volunteer opportunities as we start our new fiscal year, but I just want to thank you for giving us the platform to be able to raise the awareness about what's happening in Harford County through United Way and for volunteer opportunities. If you want to attend a board meeting and hear what we're doing, please just let us know. So thank you.
Thank you, Jen and Angela, but how long have you been operating in Harford County?
We've, United Way of Central Maryland is celebrating its 100th year in 2025. So we serve Harford County and then Baltimore City and then the counties that surround the city, and we've been doing that for almost 100 years, 99 years to be exact, so.
That's pretty close to 100.
Yep.
Mr. Janjordano.
Jen, Angela, thanks for some of that information. I didn't know about 211, so pretty interesting. Who staffs 211?
It's United Way Helpline and...
There are nonprofits at the state level that oversee that as well.
And you were talking about housing.
Mm-hmm.
So how do they help with housing? Can you elaborate on that a little bit more?
Yeah, so if you call 211, that's the biggest request, is help for housing, and so if you call 211, you can be connected to one of our specialists, and they can direct you and they can drill down by zip code. So if you live in 21015, they can tell you what housing programs are in your area.
What if somebody lives, Taliesin wants to come to Bel Air, can they call that 211 for that information?
They can, and they can say, "I'm looking for housing in 21014," and they can direct them of where to call. The United Way also has some other programs where they can maybe help them figure out how to get security deposits, eviction prevention, that kind of stuff.
Do they also help them apply and go through the process, maybe in some, you know, whether it's Baltimore County or Harford County? Here's, you know, "Hey, I applied five years ago, I haven't heard back. Okay, let's go through..." Do they help them with that as well? Is that something you do?
They can help them get connected to the programs that can help them walk through that. We do have some of our own funding, though, that can help them with like eviction prevention and some security deposits, so it really depends what they qualify for, and those specialists will drill down really into the problems that they're having and try to help them solve that.
Okay.
Whether it's connecting outside or one of our specialists that's in United Way.
What about food? And I think I heard you mention some of that, but I know a lot of kids are, you know, with groceries going up through the roof and, you know, kids are maybe not getting the meals that they should. One of the things they found out, if a kid doesn't eat, then he doesn't learn, and I'm probably like that. If I don't eat, I don't learn either, so.
I would agree.
But I ate well growing up, so I worry about some of these kids don't have a place to eat, don't have, you know, breakfast, don't have... Do you guys also participate or do anything for that?
We do, and one of the new initiatives that we are, we've revamped our health initiatives, and they're doing micro grants in each of our jurisdictions to help smaller nonprofits with food access for families. So that's on the way, but with our 211 helpline, you can also be connected to food pantries in the area as well. So they have over 7,500 resources available to them, so they can call, they can text, they can email, they can even log onto the computer and have access to that database. But also, the United Way is having a food distribution on August 6th, and I invite you guys all to come out and...
What day is that?
It's a...
Tuesday.
Day, August 6th. We're going to be at the Epicenter in Edgewood, heading to 1, and we're going to be sorting Holly Poultry's donating chicken, and First Fruits Farms is donating boxes of fresh produce, so we have volunteers coming. We're going to sort box and then hand out to at least 100 people, depending on how much is donated, but...
So let me ask you another question. How many people do you need to help you that day?
I will take as many as I can get, at least 20.
20?
Yeah.
Okay. So if I can get your information, I'll get you 20 guys from SIAD, will show up and will help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. We did Lasso's a couple of years ago, we helped them. They were trying to put out some food and they didn't have anybody that was going to help sort, and I was like, "How are you going to get this done in like an hour?" I said, "Well, let me call a couple of people," and I had like 10 guys show up. So if you give me that, that'll be my birthday present, so if you give me that information, we'll come out and do that.
It's also a food pantry day at the Epicenter, so they will also be having, and the last few times I've been there, on their food pantry day, they've had a pretty long line of people, and they're doing a great job with their choice food pantry of serving the neighbors that are right in that community.
Okay.
Having Mary Beth Stapleton on the board, she actually sent us the food pantry itemized list of where they're going to be through the summer, specific for that different area, so I'll send that to you as well.
Might like save it if you send it to Joanne. That would be great. I appreciate it. Thank you, thank you for what you do.
Thanks for your questions.
Thank you, guys.
Anyone else? Mr. Bennett.
As far as funding goes for you all, is that primarily through fundraising, through donations? How does that work for you all?
Yes, so fundraising, donations from private donors, we do a lot of workplace accounts, so that's part of my job is managing our workplace partners, where folks will donate through their payroll check, but a lot of our programming is grant-funded.
And they ask their run boards to participate as well. It can be any dollar amount, but, you know, just having that financial commitment really just shows you're vested in the mission, and so I'm proud to say Harford County had 100% in fundraising, right?
They did, and 100% volunteer engagement as well, so.
And were we the only one in the state of Maryland to do that?
Angela.
She's not competitive.
Two, two.
Miss Sodles.
I just wanted to say I had the opportunity to serve on the board of United Way, and you all do amazing things. Project Connect is something that everyone should be involved in, and I'd like to get the date on the calendar to help out again, and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for having us out.
Mr. Pennman.
I just want to echo what my colleague said, Jen, Angela, outreach for the community is such a wonderful service. We wouldn't be the county we are if we didn't have programs like yours. It is truly God-sent, so I look forward to helping you and volunteering in the future, and thank you and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Mr. Guthrie.
Same comments. Thank you for all you do, and I'll be at the Epicenter also. It's already on my schedule. Wouldn't miss it.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for coming this evening. Thank you for your presentation, and thank you for the service to our community.
Right back at you. Thank you, all of you, and have a wonderful summer.
Yes, sir.
One quick thing.
Don't keep so many candles in there?
No. When's the barbecue bash?
The second weekend in October.
Second weekend in October. Just want everybody to hear that so they can, don't think it's coming this summer, it's in the fall.
They moved it to October.
I think that was a great move. Thank you.
Thanks for giving me an easy pass.
Oktoberfest.
General Item Number Seven, Approval of Minutes. Special Legislative Day 24019, June 10th, 2024. Public hearing, June 11th, 2024. Legislative Day 24020, June 11th, 2024. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes stand approved. Eight, Introduction and Consideration of Resolutions. Resolution 01324, Performance and Operational Audits. Ms. Brooks.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. So you all have in front of you Resolution 1324. This is the audit plan for fiscal year 2025. The county code requires that the council approve operational and performance audits that we perform in addition to the financial audit procedures that we do. So we go through every year, we update our risk assessment of all of the business processes that the county has to really figure out, you know, what could go wrong, how bad it would be if that thing went wrong. We consider input from you all as council members, the county executive's office, and just our evaluation of things that we've looked at over the past several years to figure out what needs to be in our audit plan, what do we need to be looking at. So in the audit plan, there are things that we do every year, so we make sure that the county financial statement audits are done, that's done by an external audit firm. We follow up on prior audit findings that we've had. We look at purchase card controls, we look at hotel occupancy tax. For 2025, we'll be doing, we'll be reviewing employee separation procedures and building inspection and permits, billing and collection controls. Both of those are projects that were in the fiscal year 2024 audit plan but are being postponed. We'll be taking a look at payroll controls, inventory controls for information and communication technology, safety compliance and risk management practices, real property tax billing and collection controls. We'll take a look at contract management, we'll look at the capital projects for the county's affiliated agencies, Employee Benefits Administration, and the inmate accounts at the detention center. So those are the big projects that we have planned. We also always set up our audit plan to accommodate things like unanticipated projects, requests from you all, attending council meetings when we need to, community meetings, paid time off for staff, training, quality assurance and improvement program kind of things. So we think we've got enough time to get all this work done. Of course, we'll speak to you all periodically throughout the year, but if you have any questions about the audit plan, I can certainly answer them, and I hope that you all will approve this resolution.
Mr. Riley.
I see you have hotel occupancy tax, and it's determined if the county's collected the correct amount. Do you ever audit the folks that get the hotel tax to see if in fact they are spending it appropriately?
The amount of money, well, the amount of money that is being given out in grants and tourism grants, we audit that in our grant control audit.
Okay. Right? Yeah.
I think he's talking about the recipients.
The recipients of tourism grants.
Yes.
We look at their information when we review the county's grant management process, so essentially we'll be looking to see whether the county is doing what it should be to monitor the grants that it gives out. Those are the things that we look at.
So you're not actually monitoring what they're spending, the grant folks are spending their money on, you're just monitoring whether or not the county's giving the grant people the right amount of money?
Yes, the right amount of money, but also we look to see whether or not those grantees have provided records to the county to support what they've done with their...
Thank you. That answered my question.
Mr. Pennman.
Ms. Brooks, I want to thank you for your report. I want to thank you for all the hard work that you put towards Harford County. I know that I rely on you a lot just for your expertise, and in addition to all these audits, you have many, many more responsibilities, so thank you for what you do. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Anyone else? So council, we are going to be a.
President, I do not believe that it's been introduced, that it's been adopted resolution. So before a motion to approve, it should be.
He just needs to read it and.
I, I don't have the resolution. I, I have the, I have council president move to approve the resolution, but I don't have the introduction, which I can read. Thank you, sir.
How did we miss that?
Council president, a resolution, a resolution authorizing the county auditor to conduct operational performance auditing procedures included in the fiscal year twenty twenty-five annual audit plan. I move to approve this.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Jandredano, and Mr. Pennman. It's moving to second to approve resolution zero thirteen dash twenty-four. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bennett?
Let it be known that Mr. Kearney will be doing his job till the very last second.
Appreciate that. Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Did I skip you? Mr. Jandredano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye, again.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
It'd be seven votes in the affirmative, zero in a negative. Resolution zero thirteen twenty-four is hereby approved. Ten, introduction and consideration of amendments, we have none. Eleven, call for final reading of bills, bill twenty-four dash zero sixteen, charter amendment, article five, budget and finance, section five twelve, as amended. Mr. Pennman may have a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve bill twenty-four sixteen, charter amendment, article five, budget and finance, section five twelve, as amended.
May I have a second?
Second.
I believe that was Mr. Bennett. It's been moved and seconded to approve bill twenty-four dash zero sixteen, charter amendment. Is there any discussion? Mr. Pennman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know this was a great discussion last week and over the last month, and I appreciate everyone's feedback and consideration. I would just like to reiterate that, you know, if this bill were to pass, it would merely just ensure that it's on the ballot so the community members can vote on it this November. I look forward to this passing, it is my hope that it passes, and that it allows a great working relationship for years to come, just not, you know, the, the current administration and council, but years to come, a great working partnership relationship where everyone shares the responsibility. So with that, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Anyone else? Ms. Sodles?
Thank you. I support this bill as it's amended with the requirement that any amendments to the budget are supported by affirmative vote of at least five council members. I'm also in favor of this bill because it gives the voters of Hartford County the opportunity to approve or deny the proposed charter amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. Anyone else? Mr. Guthrie?
I, I don't support this bill, and I don't support this bill because I know what this bill, if passed, will cause, the havoc it's going to cause on the council. This is my fourteenth year, my fourteenth budget with the county, and in my previous job, I handled budgets for fifty years of pensions and, and healthcare and I was first, you know, amounting to millions of dollars. So I understand budgets, and I understand what it takes to get that budget from across the street over here. You have about fourteen or fifteen different departments in the county. Every department has to come up with its own budget and send it over to the administration. Each one, each department has a department head who's hired with a background and knowing all about that particular subject of which he leads, he has a, he or she has a staff that keeps all those records all year long, and they provide out all that information to the chick, to the head of the department. Then that person puts the, their request for their budget, all twelve, thirteen of them, send it over to the county executive, and then his staff go through all that, and they put the entire budget together and get, with the approval of the county executive, and then that budget comes over here. We don't have the staff or the kind of people to be able to handle that. Some of the council members up here, you know, they're fairly new, and, and they don't, they really don't know what they're asking for. You're going to get a situation where you're going to have, I, I can agree, there's probably a lot of organizations out there that may be in favor of this, but they're in favor because they think they're going to get a piece of the action, you know, more than they're getting now. So when you get down to, to getting the budget, and then if this was in effect, you're going to have all these different departments, all these different outfits out in the county are now thinking they're going to come to the county council, and they're going to go to each one of their members, and they're going to talk their members into taking a million dollars from here, or five hundred thousand dollars from here, and move it over here. Because that's what it takes, because there's only one pie, okay? We all know the pie story, okay, all the slices of the pie are all the different departments. And then, and you can't add any money to it regardless, you can't add any money to the budget, the budget's the budget, one point two billion, and with about sixty percent of that going to schools, without, without question. You're going to have council members fighting council members, you're going to have, you're going to have sheriff's department asking for this, and you're going to have some, other departments are going to be asking for this, you're going to have the schools asking for this, and they're all going to be asking now, they said now, they got it over here, that piece of the action. Now we can get more. Well, then, you, you got this department here and this department here, so you take a hundred thousand here, put it over here, made these people happy. Well, boy, you made these people unhappy. You took a hundred thousand dollars away from them. That's what it takes, and that's the simple math of this bill. The simple math is you've got to take money from somebody and give it to somebody else. Now, now who's here got all the background that all those departments have, and all their staff, and all the heads have for saying what they need in their budget? Who's got the time, you know? There's, there's only two members on this council who, and we just happened to retire, is the only reason we have more time than the other five members, but they all have jobs, other jobs, they have businesses or whatever, and that's, you know, that's not, that's not coming down on them, but they're not going to have the time to do what they think they, they're going to think they do. But when it happens, and then you get all these departments coming at you from every direction to try to get more money. I was on, on the council before, and Slutsky was president of the council at the time, and we were trying to get some money for the schools so they could give the teachers three percent. So we took a million dollars from sheriff's department, moved it over, gave it to the schools so you could give the teachers all three percent raise. Well, you know, you got clobbered by the sheriff department, who took a million dollars from them, you know? That's what you're talking about, that's what this bill is. So I, I understand, I mean, my, my emails that come in are sixty-six to fourteen against this bill. I know other people have other numbers, but that's what's come into my office, sixty-six to fourteen. I'm against it because it's not the best interests of Hartford County or its citizens. So I, that, that is the reason I'm opposed to the bill. No?
No, sir.
At the end.
No, sir. Anything else, Mr. Guthrie? Mr. Bennett?
I'd just like to add, you know, like Councilman Guthrie just pointed out, this process already exists in essence for the school system, where we can cut from any department and add that money to the school system's budget. I think what this would do is allow for us to, to do that for other entities as well, you know? And the thing about the school system we should remember is, you know, it's the largest thing that we fund, it represents a little over forty percent of the operational budget, you know, it gets over fifty percent when you add in the libraries and community college to that. But to be able to follow that same process for not just the school system, but all entities, I think that's why we heard from all of our public sector employee unions that represent our county employees, from DPW and so on, who said, you know, this would help us. And, and like I said last week, I don't think we're going to be making large changes to the budget in a world where this exists, because it's just not possible. There's only so much fill into the pie, but, you know, the small changes that we can make after we sit through those four days of budget hearings, and we hear from everybody, and we see, you know, it's a huge budget, and sometimes the county executive and his staff miss a thing here or there, like with volunteer fire department this year, or with the ARC or so on, those small dollar adjustments that we could handle and ensure that they're taken care of, rather than just sending a letter to the county executive asking for them to be taken care of. So, you know, I don't really think about this as, you know, large swaps of money, but rather net zero, small changes that we could do to take care of those things that come up during our public hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Guthrie?
Just as a follow-up, Councilman Bennett is correct about only wanting to do small numbers. The problem is, they're going to expect big numbers. That's what you're going to get, you're going to, this department's going to be fighting this one, they're fighting that one, fighting, we want this, hey, now you're our buddy, you know, get it for us. That's the problem, they're going to be expecting it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Ms. Sodles?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to add that as a business owner and a member of the council, I do have to make a payroll every week, so I'm very familiar with how budgets work and how the numbers work. That's one thing I'd like to point out, as well as, this doesn't give us the opportunity to increase the budget, it gives us the ability to make adjustments as necessary. And hopefully throughout this process, it would give us the encouragement, and the administration, the encouragement to work together. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. Anyone else? Excuse me, sir?
I said it gives you the ability to do what you want with the money and not have to say nothing.
Sir, you're out of order in the chambers right now. Okay, thank you. I wasn't going to say anything, but now I am. This is not the first time I've seen this bill. This bill was brought to me in twenty-one, very similar, by Councilman Wagner, and at the time, we did not receive a lot of pushback or a lot of interest in the bill, so it did not move forward. But currently, with the bill that we have, it puts us in an awkward position because we've heard from many, many of our constituents and citizens across this county, both in support and in opposition. And someone sent me an email the other day, and they said, Mr. President, it looks like you're on the fence. And I said, I am on the fence. And that's one of the reasons why I put the super majority amendment in there. There need to be some control, and I thought that was a great place to start. But I think the thing that everyone needs to realize is, this is not a vote to support the bill, this is a vote to move the bill to the citizens that we're hearing from. And if they decide to move this, then that's their, their vote. We're giving them an opportunity to be heard. We've heard them, I mean, there's hundreds of citizens in this folder, hundreds, being represented to both support and oppose. So I feel an obligation to the citizens that we serve to give them the opportunity to speak, and that's why I will be supporting this. Mr. Riley?
With that, I would think that we would do that with every vote, then. It doesn't make sense that we're throwing it out to the citizens unless we do that with every vote we do up here. I personally, I counted them, I had two hundred and fifty against, ten four in my district, District D, it's a very conservative district. Again, I will say, as I said last week, one of the problems is if you give a ten dollars to the highway administration to do the highways, and then all of a sudden we is, on the day I decided to take two dollars from them, now they're working with eight dollars, that they have to do the same kind of task that the community has asked them to do, snow removal, potholes and all that stuff, goes to hell in a handbasket. So I am vehemently opposed to this, I think it's bad governance, and I would hope that we'd all vote this down.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
No.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Jandredano?
No.
Mr. Riley?
No.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being four verts, votes in the affirmative, three in a negative, bill twenty-four oh sixteen, as amended, is hereby approved. Bill twenty-four dash zero eighteen, Mr. Pennman?
Mr. President, I would like to withdraw this bill, twenty-four eighteen, liquor stores and B-one neighborhood business district. Again, I want to appreciate, just extend my appreciation to the community for the discussion, whether you're for or against the bill. And hearing those discussions, I understand the concerns, I think there, there is progress to be made down the road, whether that's special exception or discussion with, with the owner. But because of that, I am going to withdraw the bill, twenty-four eighteen, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. We'll move on to bill twenty-four zero nineteen, fashion weight name change, Mr. Jandredano?
Council president, I move to approve bill twenty-four dash zero one nine.
Thank you, you may have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved and seconded to approve bill twenty-four dash zero one nine. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Jandredano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in affirmative, zero in a negative, bill twenty-four oh one nine is hereby approved. Bill twenty-four dash zero twenty, economic development opportunity loan fund, may have a motion?
Council president, I move to approve bill twenty-four dash zero twenty.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's moving to second to approve bill twenty-four oh twenty. Is there any discussion? Mr. Jandredano?
Thank you, council president. I'm the liaison to the economic development, I've sat in on a bunch of the meetings when they were talking about expanding the loan to make it available at a higher amount without oversight of the council. The people on the, on the board are all, you know, one is a banker, very successful banker, some good community leaders, and I think with the way the economy has gotten and the price of everything, it's, it's grown, and this was something that just needed to be addressed so that hopefully we can get some people into the program that need some money that the county can help based on this program. So I'm fully in support of that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Jandredano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in affirmative, zero in a negative, bill twenty-four oh twenty is hereby approved. Bill twenty-four oh twenty-three, zoning law signs as amended, may have a motion?
Council president, I move to approve bill twenty-four dash zero twenty-three, as amended.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. It's moving to second to approve twenty-four oh twenty-three, is there any discussion? Council, we will, as I said earlier, we will be looking at this again. The administration has asked to, to look at this for some other amendments to this electronic message boards legislation. We were looking at possibly doing something today, but there just wasn't enough time to get it correct. So talked to Mr. Richardson today, talked to several other people today, and we will be revisiting this in September. So with that, anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Jandredano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in a negative, bill twenty-four oh twenty-three, as amended, is hereby approved. Bill twenty-four oh twenty-four, livability code, as amended, may have a motion?
Council president, I move to approve bill twenty-four dash zero twenty-four, as amended.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. It's been moved and seconded to approve bill twenty-four oh twenty-four, as amended. Is there any discussion? Mr. Guthrie?
Yes, I'm certainly glad to see this come up again. This livability code hasn't been changed in thirty-five years. changed in 35 years. It was developed in June of 4th, June 4th, 1988. That's how long this code has been, and it's so outdated, I can't begin to tell you. I tried it, uh, the April 1st, 2014, I introduced the bill that failed by a four to three vote. So, I'm very happy to see this livability code come back. There's some really bad operations around our county with really some slumdog millionaires that are affecting people who live in some of these apartments and all. And it's time we addressed it. I'm certainly glad to see this bill come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Jandredano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in a negative, Bill 24-024 as amended is hereby approved. Twelve enrollment of bills. Bill 24-016 as amended, 24-019, 24-020, 24-023 as amended, and 24-024 as amended are certified as being the text finally passed. Thirteen unfinished business. We have none. Fourteen, new business auditor update. Ms. Brooks?
Back again. Periodically throughout the year, I come to you all to let you all know what's been going on in the office of the county auditor. So, the last time I presented was in December of 2023, so six months or so ago. There was one project left in our audit plan from fiscal year 2023. It was related to the county's recruitment and hiring practices. We finished that project in February. There were two issues that we noted. One was related to background checks and physicals or drug screens either not being completed before an employee starts or just not existing at all. Management advised us that they are going to be making sure that those things happen before employees start. The other issue was that there were some positions or people who were employed by the county in non-standard positions, and so it's difficult to make sure for a non-standard position that people are being paid the amount that they should be for whatever it is that they are doing. Human Resources advised us that they are hoping to address that matter so that there will be fewer non-standard positions when the county implements its new HR information system in January of 2025. So, that was the last project that was left from the fiscal '23 plan, jumping into what's left from fiscal '24. We completed an audit of property management controls to make sure that, you know, people that lease property from the county that they're paying on time, but also properties that the county is leasing to others that were paying those leases on time. And then, of course, with whatever the contract terms are. We didn't note any new issues in that project. There was one finding that had come up in the last audit of property management controls where there were some payments that the county received late or incorrect. That process has been adjusted so that now invoices for rent that people owe to the county, those invoices come from the treasurer's office instead of property management. We will follow up in our findings follow-up projects, see what that status looks like over the summer. The financial statement audits for fiscal year 2023 were completed. After you all got that audit report, you would have received a later report from me in December related to the county's affiliated agencies. So, making sure that the volunteer fire companies, the Humane Society, the ARC, that those organizations get financial statement audits completed on time. When we finished that project in December, there were three, excuse me, two fire companies, Falston and Tusquehanna Hoos Company, that hadn't completed their financial statement reporting in time to be included in the report. In addition, the Humane Society hadn't completed their financial statements at the time. Now, all three of those are done. We didn't notice for any of the affiliated agencies, anything that reflected that any county funds had been misspent. They had a clean audit opinion. We also looked at Parks and Recreation's inventory controls. There was one issue that we reported, and it was related to inventory lists being kept by Parks and Recreation that were inconsistent. So, different departments had, not different departments, different divisions within the department had different inventory lists that they were keeping for different purposes. When we compared those things, they didn't necessarily agree. When we went out to try to track down some of the items on the inventory, some of them were not necessarily in the place that we expected to find them, or they had been replaced by new items. Essentially, we recommended that this year, when the county goes through its annual inventory process, that the folks in Parks and Rec will review their inventory lists with an effort of making sure that it is up to date and that they keep essentially one list that's going to be their main list. We also know that there are a lot of things that Parks and Recreation keeps track of that it's useful to know, but not necessarily needing to be included in their major inventory list. So, for example, at the estuary, there are, you know, a whole bunch of taxidermied animals, right? These are things that are kind of small. They're not easily replaced. They don't have specific high dollar value. Somebody should maybe keep track of them. They don't have to be in the central inventory list. So, like I said, our recommendation was that they review those lists with an effort to remove obsolete things and take out things that they don't necessarily need to be keeping track of. We are working on an audit of cable franchise fees currently. We've sent out our findings to the cable companies so that they can provide responses to us. My hope is to get you all that report in July. We are working on an audit of facility access controls, trying to see who's got access to what buildings around the county. I was hoping to have that project done in July, but we found out earlier this week that it's going to take until mid-July to get the documents that we are requesting. So, my hope is to have a report issued on that in late August now. We audited Hartford Transit's cash receipt controls. We wanted to make sure that, you know, when folks are paying their tokens on the bus or with their apps or with vouchers, that those things total up the way we expect them to. The cash is protected and deposited timely. There were no issues there. Everything happened as we expected to, so no issues. Two projects I mentioned earlier today, the employee separation procedures and the building inspections and permit billing and collection controls project, we're postponing both of those to the next fiscal year. We completed an audit, well, I'll jump down a little bit. Actually, we just started our audits of hotel occupancy tax for this year. There'll be five that we're working on, so that project is in progress. The last one is EMS billing controls. We look to see that the amount that the county is collecting for the EMS services it provides is complete, correct, timely, et cetera. There were three issues that we noted in that report. The first thing, that there were some transports that had not been billed. A lot of transports that had not been billed. This seemed to be a result of when the county took over the EMS service from the fire companies in 2023, the spring to early summer of 2023, the, it essentially increased the volume of transports that needed to have a quality assurance review before it could go to billing. The county just wasn't staffed up to do that, and so there were a lot of transports that didn't get billed. I think we said about 11,700. It was a lot. We, in our discussions with management, they've hired more people to get through that. They're working through the backlog. I did check last week to see, it looked like about 40% of the backlog from 2023 had been billed. So, they are making progress on that. We also noted that for transports that happened in 2023 and 2024, the billing rates had not been updated by the billing company. So, the county charges based on what the Medicare and Medicaid rates are. Those rates change every year. So, at the beginning of 2023, they should have been adjusted. They weren't. Additionally, the county council approved an increase from 100% of those Medicare and Medicaid rates to 175%. That change was implemented, but it was implemented based on the wrong number, the wrong base. So, there were a number of transports that were billed at lower rates than they could have been. Management has corrected that, and I've checked to look to see some of the claims that were, I actually looked at, I think I looked at April and May of this year to confirm that the rates have been corrected. So, that's been fixed. The third issue was that, and it's a relatively small issue, but the amount that we paid to the billing company, we owed them about $5,000 more than we paid. It was a calculation error in some of the payments that they are supposed to get related to supplemental Medicaid payments. Our recommendation to management was that they need to, every time they get an invoice from the billing company, they should compare that invoice to the amount of deposits that the county has actually received to make sure that those amounts line up and that their calculation, the calculations of the amounts that we're paying to them are correct. And management told us that they've implemented a new process to make sure that happens. Like with all these issues that we've found, we will circle back to them over the summer to see what progress has been made. So, I know that was a lot of information, but I can certainly answer any questions that you all have.
Mr. Jandredano?
Crystal, that was a lot of information.
I know.
So, but the thing that caught my eye?
Your ear.
My, well, my ear, my eye, because I wrote it down. So, 11,000 of the EMS trips, what is that in dollar amount? That's what I would like to know. What's the revenue for that?
We estimated, just based on the normal sort of collection rate that we have, the types of transports that are billed, we estimated that it was about 4.9 million in county revenue that hadn't been billed for 2023.
So, how do we resolve that, that we get that 4.9 million? And is that, are they work, obviously, it sounded like they were working on doing that.
Yeah. When I, for the progress since we pulled reports, so from February to now, it looked like about 3.3 of that has been billed. Obviously, it takes time for those claims to go out to insurance companies, residents, whoever use the EMS service before we get that money. But because they're working on the backlog, eventually that money should come in.
What department is in charge of that?
Emergency Services.
So, that's all, Emergency Services is taking care of the billing and collecting that?
They have an outside builder.
They have an outside.
There's a contractor that does the billing. So, the quality assurance happens within Emergency Services, and then electronically, those, the medical records are transferred to the billing company to send out invoices.
And on your end auditing, if they, somebody doesn't pay for that, does it go in a separate category?
There are procedures in place to waive charges that aren't, that it doesn't seem like they're going to be paid. There is an accounts receivable process that looks to see what the agent looks like on those.
So, if I may?
You may.
Not every bill that gets sent out can be paid. For whatever reason, not everyone pays. Fire companies have experienced this for years, depending on which fire company it is. I was in a meeting with Crystal when this first popped up, and I asked her immediately what it meant to be behind 11,000-plus calls. She told me that day what it was. And then I did make some phone calls. And the reason being is they did not have enough people in-house doing the quality assurance so the billing could be sent to the outside billers. Now, that has since been addressed.
They're working on it.
And they have some other people in, and some of that has been caught up. At one point, it was way higher than 11,000. So, they've gained a lot of ground in the last few months. And I think eventually we'll get caught up. But you have to understand the impact of what they took on or what the county took on in such a short amount of time. They are catching up.
So, I'll add to what you said. So, as I'm looking now, for 2023, there are about 3,600 transports that still need to be billed. And generally, the county collects about 80% of what it bills for EMS revenue.
Mr. Penman?
Yeah, that's, that number is shocking. Is there a time limit on when or how we can collect that money through the insurance companies?
Well, not really. I mean, there are going to be insurance companies that aren't going to pay your claims after a certain point in time, but none of these are at that point. Certainly, not everybody has insurance. So, not every EMS transport is going to be going to an insurance company. Some of these will be self-paid things. You know, we, the person who uses the service will be billed at some point. At some point, if it's not paid, or they can't pay, or somebody makes arrangements for it to not be paid, then we wouldn't collect it. But everything here is within the time range of, we would expect to get paid for it.
Did the issue come from the staffing issues with the contracted company or the staffing issues with our own EMS program?
With the emergency services, yeah. Before, the county only had, you know, like three ambulances. The number of transports that they needed to review was enough that a part-time person could do all the quality assurance. We, if you go back and look at the report, there is a little chart that shows the change in volume over time. And essentially, the number of claims went, excuse me, the ones that were county-related went from a little less than 500 a month to almost 2,000 transports a month. And so, it was a significant increase in volume. But there weren't enough people to review.
Right. No, I get it. I know there's going to be growing pains, but that's, that's an issue that's going to be expected, right? That's an issue that each individual fire company was billing, right? So, they can predict what that number is and put people in place prior to, you know?
My impression is that the change over, that there just wasn't enough time to do that. They were working on it, but it just didn't happen. Specifically, in management's response, shoot, they said that they have hired additional staff. A full-time person was hired to work on it in November, and a retiree will be placed with another full-time person in July. So...
It just seems like, you know, a continual problem. Again, I know there's going to be learning curves, and change is hard, but, you know, from hiring the number of people that we're not realizing that, you know, people are going to take off, and overtime is now at $8 million. And then, you know, not billing everyone, just seems like something that we could have predicted and provided time and attention for. That's all. But thank you so much for digging into that.
Mr. Riley?
Yeah, Crystal?
Interested in, just for my information, the cable franchise fees. How many cable companies do we have here in Hartford County?
There are three, Armstrong, Verizon, and Compass.
And so, wouldn't that be just a one-time yearly fee that they would pay?
No, it's based on the amount of revenue that they collect in Hartford County, and so they...
Subscriptions go up and down.
Right, essentially. That's how it works.
Thanks.
Mr. Kearney, do you want to weigh in on that?
No, no, that's accurate. That's part of how many viewers they have with cable television, which is actually going to help.
Thank you. Mr. Bennett?
One more question about the billing. I understand it's possible to catch up on people that weren't billed. For the people that were underbilled, is that also rectifiable? Or is that like, we messed up and now you get to keep the cheaper rate?
Yeah, essentially. I mean, in theory, it could be, but practically, it's not. The amount we estimated was underbilled was just a little bit less than $200,000.
And, okay, so that, that $200,000 is not included in the four, you said 4.9?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Thank you, Crystal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And listen, I appreciate all you do, and I think the citizens really don't have an idea of all the areas that you have contact with as far as the audits go. And we appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Council contract. Council, as many of you know, we've been in the process of holding adequate public facilities studies or public facilities meetings in reference to school capacity. And there's been some discussion on the fiscal number, whether it be 110, drop it to 100, whatever. And many of us thought it was the right thing to do to bring a consultant on board to look at this issue, similar to what we're doing as far as impact fees across the street with the administration. We talked with Tischler Bies, who's doing the impact fees. They're not, they don't handle APFO studies. So, they put us in contact with White and Smith.
White and Smith.
White and Smith. And today, actually prior to, Mr. Kearney had been working with us. White and Smith, and today, actually, prior to, Mr. Kearney had been working on a contract with White and Smith to present to the Board of Estimates, which we did today, so that the Board of Estimates could have a chance to weigh in on it. And we worked close with Mr. Sands, the county treasurer, and so, the Board of Estimates approved the contract that Mr. Kearney had worked with, I'm trying to think of his name, Tyson, thank you.
Tyson, that's right.
Thank you. And so, we have before you tonight, a contract to consider, and Mr. Kearney, if you would, would you address the particulars of that contract?
Well, I know that each of council members have a contract in front of them.
But for the citizens at home?
I could go through the eight points if you want.
Please.
Okay. Let me pull it out. Okay, they will review the background documents and data from county and Harford County public schools and attend a virtual kickoff meeting with county staff. They will prepare for and attend one day in-person series of stakeholder meetings, including a kickoff with a SAPFO, which is School Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance, Steering Committee, which the county has or is assembling. They will prepare for and attend up to five additional virtual meetings with the Steering Committee. They will prepare and attend up to five additional virtual work sessions with the county, and as applicable, the Harford County Public School staff members. They will develop a revised School Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance, including four rounds of revisions, staff, public review, council, and final, but ultimately, the council would have the absolute final on any legislation. They will coordinate with the county and Harford County Public School staff in developing necessary technical analysis and support for the School Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance, including, for example, capacity projections and cost. Some of this I am not familiar with, SGR, LOS, permitting history, funding availability projections and associated calculations. Just look there with those acronyms. Please chime in. Attend one in-person meeting related to the council's consideration of the School Adequate Public Facility Ordinance for Adoption, teleconferences and virtual meetings with county staff to facilitate discussions and work product. Those are the services that they have or will be contracted to provide for the county council.
And we have a not-to-exceed price of $95,000?
Yes, that's 90,000 for their fee, not-to-exceed, and it's 5,000, not-to-exceed 5,000, or, and any of their expenses that are approved.
And that money will come from the council's budget?
Specifically, it will come from the portion of the council's budget that is of the council attorney and people's council portion of the budget.
Thank you.
Due to some salary savings related to the part-time legislative aid.
Thank you. Mr. Janjordano?
Was, did we ever have one of these studies done before in the past, or is this the first time we've ever had this study that you know of?
That I know of, I've not heard of it, but the reason behind the study is because we want to make sure that we dot all of our i's and cross all of our t's to minimize any type of lawsuit that may come from any individual or organization that may be impacted by a number that we may come up with. I just didn't think it was right for us to arbitrarily come up with a number.
I think it's a good idea.
And if I may, over the years, at least that I can recall, this number has been going up and down, and up and down, sort of like a jack-in-the-box, and I think it's the council's goal this time to try to get something that is based upon something more than, well, maybe we'll try this, see how it works, and then come back, and, well, maybe we'll try this, it might be better.
Well, I think this is a good first step, in case it has to be done 10 years down the road or further. We have something concrete from a professional to go back and look at of where we were, so I, I think this is a good first step.
And we are going to ask Councilman Guthrie and Councilman Pemben to serve on the Steering Committee because they've attended most of our APFO meetings. Also, we're going to ask for participation from DLP Planning and Zoning, and obviously, the Harford County Public Schools. We will have representation from the citizens, very similar to what has been done with the impact fee study. So, Mr. Guthrie?
I guess my only concern here is spending this kind of money to get an opinion from somebody that we should drop the APFO from 110 to 105, or 100, you know, seems like a big investment to me. I hate to go back and talk about what I did before, but when I was on the council before, the APFO was 120%, as we remember. Schools were grossly overcrowded, far greater than they are today, and we were able to get that after a lot of infighting and scratching and clawing. We got a bill passed of 105% with a sunset clause, years after the sunset to 110, which is where it is today. So, I'm just trying to, I hope somebody can convince me that we're going to spend almost $100,000 getting an opinion from somebody to tell us that, well, yeah, we should drop it 5%.
So, these are the experts in the country, at least on the East Coast. They do APFO studies for...
Well, I'm not...
Now, just bear me out here.
Well, but you're, Pat, this is the second time you did this.
I thought you were finished.
No, I'm not done.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
It's just that, I know they're professionals, you know, but we weren't professionals 20 years ago when we dropped it from 120. It didn't take, it didn't take rocket scientists to realize that we needed to drop the APFO from 120% to 100, and to 105, and then eventually 110 because of the school overcrowding, and what it eventually did, regardless of what Harkins said, and put an article in the paper, took up a whole page, how bad that bill was, it said people were going to get unemployed, were going to lose jobs and everything else, and in fact, it was just the opposite, because what happened was, we had to build a whole bunch of new schools, and to correct the overcrowding. And then, we did that. Built a brand-new Blair High School, brand-new, tore the old one down, built a brand-new Patterson Middle High School, tore Edgewood Down High School, built that, tore down Deerfield, built that, put a bunch of money into Joppetown High School, put millions into Aberdeen High School, built Havity Grace New Middle High School. That was all because of that APFO drop-down, and contractors knew, at the time, they were building about 2,000 houses a year, and this, when that passed and dropped it to 105%, they closed down about 18 areas in the county for construction. But the problem is that a contractor is out there, and he's watching this APFO, so as this number was slowly rising from 105 to 110 to 112 to 118, and they're seeing it get close to 120%, there's no miracle when it hits 120%. It doesn't say, well, okay, everything stops, you know? No, it doesn't work that way, because what happens, these contractors are watching it grow up to 120, and they realize that they can put their project in the pipeline, and they're good for two years. So, just as it gets close to 120%, they put the project in, and for 100, for 200 homes or whatever the hell it is, you know, and they put the number in there, and then, it can't stop. They've got two years, so the number can keep going, and it did. Back then, we had, we had schools 130, 140% overcrowded, it was insane, by Fawcett. I remember Fawcett, because I went to Fawcett High School for a meeting there, and because my patriot sitting here alongside me, the other one, not him, was opposed to the bill, and until she finally got, everybody got on her big time because of the overcrowding of the schools, and she eventually voted for the bill. So, I just, Pat, if you could tell me why this is a good thing to spend $100,000 for somebody to tell me to drop this 5%, I appreciate it.
Well, again, I'm going to say to you, this is the number-one firm that deals with APFOs, at least on the East Coast, that we were able to speak to and identify, and $90,000 is a lot of money. I'll be the first one to agree with that, but a new school's $100 million. Renovations to the schools that you just mentioned was well over $1 billion. I just think it's prudent for us to spend money to listen to professionals, give us the advice that we need, to make the decisions that we make. That's, those are my thoughts. Mr. Pemben?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a minute ago, you know, we don't have the expertise to weigh in on the budget, but now, we're going to weigh in on the APFO that has, is so complex, that if you adjust it, you have impact to the schools, you have impact to local economies, you have impact to local municipalities, and for us to come up with an arbitrary number that, you know, sounds good on the service, it could have potentially unintended consequences for a long time. So, while 90,000 is a lot, and, you know, I'd like to see some of their past history, just to kind of verify, I think it is worth the discussion to explore what they have to offer for a recommendation. So, you know, can they do it in five meetings? I don't know. That's one of the things, you know, maybe, maybe they can, you know, maybe they have a track record, so they know where to look, but these are subject matter experts, and if we're going to make a huge commitment to our community or adjustment to the APFO that has ramifications all over the county, including the budget, we should do our due diligence. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Mr. Riley, thank you, Mr. Pemben. Mr. Riley?
I'm trying to figure out, are they going to give us, they're going to say, okay, council, you should go to an exact number, or, I'm trying to figure out what the end result of what they're going to give us as a council as far as input, is my question.
They're going to take the information that's provided to them through Harford County Public Schools and from the Harford County itself, and they will make recommendations to us after reviewing all that information.
On a number?
Yes.
Okay, so the number can only fluctuate, essentially, what we have is between 110 and 105 because of the...
I have no idea. That's why we're going to consultants.
But my point is, you're not going to get anything lower than 105 on the dais, it's 110 now, so we're doing this for the 5%.
I have no idea where the number's going to be. It could be 100, I don't know. I have no idea.
Right, but you're not going to get us to go to 110.
But I'm just saying, I'm just saying, we don't know what we don't know. Mr. Guthrie?
Well, you only have a couple of schools now that are even over 110. Back 20 years ago, we had 18 schools that were over 120, and it was, that was massive at that time. We're talking, you know, in comparison, this is small potatoes. If you're going to move it down to 105 or 100, wherever it might add up, wind up, it's a council's decision. I'm just having a hard time understanding why, I can't help it, but to spend $100,000 for somebody to tell me something I already know.
I appreciate that, Mr. Guthrie.
Sorry.
Mr. Bennett?
You know, I'm big on looking at other counties and just looking for models of success elsewhere, and I think it's important, as a council, we recognize there is no one set path that other counties have taken with their APFO number. You know, some of our western counties, for instance, set a stricter number for their elementary schools than their middle school and high schools, with the thought process being that elementary schools have a smaller footprint they pull from for students, so having stricter numbers there doesn't impact as much of the community at large for housing development, whereas your middle schools and high schools pull from the footprint of multiple elementary schools. So, you know, having a looser number there helps prevent, you know, mass shutdown of construction all at once when that, you know, middle school, or middle school or high school hits a certain number, whereas other regions have set a flat number for all types of schools. I just think it's important to recognize that, you know, having a work group like this will be able to look at all the other counties across the state and elsewhere to see, you know, what's working and what's successful elsewhere. You know, it's not so simple as just coming out with a number, but, you know, what's the optimal practice to support our community, and I think that's important to look at.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Guthrie?
All right, close on one thing.
Sure.
This county has 200, about 260,000 people. Ballmer County has 860-some thousand, 840,000, somewhere around there. They just dropped theirs to 100%, and they didn't hire anybody to do it. The council did it. Thank you.
You're welcome. May I have a motion on this?
Council President, I move to approve the appoint, I'm sorry, I move to approve the adequate public facility study.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second?
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. It's been moved and seconded to approve the School Adequate Public Facility Study and White Smith. Is there any more discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
No.
Mr. Pemben?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
No.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye. There being five votes in affirmative, two in a negative, the contract for the APFO study is hereby approved. Thank you. Zoning Hearing Examiner, we still have, where we have another conflict with our zoning examiner cases, and we, if you recall, we just did a contract with Mr. Plitt. He's not available for this one, so we are asking to bring in Mr. Best, or Bestie, I'm not quite sure.
Bestie.
Bestie. And so, if I could get a motion on that, please?
Council President, I move to approve the appointment of David Bestie as zoning Hearing Examiner.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pemben. It's been moved and seconded to approve the zoning hearing examiner. Mr. Kearney, why don't you add some background to this, as far as how you got Mr. Bestie's name?
Sure, Dorothy Smith, our zoning hearing assistant. I contacted the gentleman and brought it to you, I believe. I'm not familiar with the gentleman. I have read his resume, and it certainly does look qualified legal paper.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pemben?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in affirmative, zero in a negative, the appointment of David Bestie as zoning hearing examiner is hereby approved. And then, finally, with the charter amendment passing, Mr. Pemben, would you please read the charter amendment ballot language?
Yes. Council President, I move to approve the Harford County ballot question regarding Bill 2416, question B, proposed amendment to the Harford County Charter.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. It's been moved and seconded to approve the charter amendment. Is there any ballot language, is there any discussion? Mr. Bennett?
Can someone read that language aloud, just to have it spoken onto the record?
Of course. Article 5, Budget of Finance, Section 512, Action on the Budget by the Council to amend the Harford County Charter to provide for the ability of the county council to increase certain items in the proposed annual budget by a vote of at least five members in addition to the present ability to decrease or delete items.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
No.
Mr. Pemben?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
No.
Mr. Riley?
No.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being four votes in the affirmative, three in a negative, the charter amendment ballot language is hereby approved. Agenda number 17, comments and input from attending citizens.
We have two this evening, Mr. President. Rick Metzner, followed by John Malamo.
Good evening, Mr. Metzner.
Good evening.
Name and address, please.
Yes, Richard Metzner, 2405 Edwards Manor Drive in Forest Hill, Maryland, 21050. Good evening, members of the Harford County Council. I stand for you today to address a deeply concerning issue regarding the Harford County government's social media page and its communication practices. of myself and many concerned citizens that the information presented on this platform is often misleading and alarmist. Instead of providing straightforward factual updates, the posts are frequently framed in a way that unnecessarily inflames and distorts the narrative. For instance, rather than simply informing residents of an important budget meeting, the official municipal page says, newsflash, this is an important budget meeting tonight to discuss the threat to the taxpayers. This kind of sensationalism is not only unprofessional, but it undermines the trust and the transparency that should be the cornerstone of our local government. Such rhetoric plants seeds of doubt and erodes the essential trust between the government and its constituency. Moreover, there's the disturbing trend of censorship on this page. Comments and posts that do not align with the views of Mr. Castle are frequently either hidden or outright deleted. This is an affront to free speech and open dialogue, principles which are fundamental to a healthy democracy. Citizens have the right to express their opinions and engage in discussions about decisions that affect their lives without fear of being silenced. Let's be clear, the Harford County government's social media pages should not, uh, have political views. They are a neutral distribution channel for information intended to serve as an outlet for government services and programs. These platforms are meant to represent the collective body in the community, providing transparent and unbiased information from a municipal standpoint. This manipulation and censorship must end, and I urge the council to investigate these practices and take appropriate measures to ensure that our county's social media is used to inform and engage and not to manipulate and mislead. We deserve a government that respects its citizens and values transparency and honest communication. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Sir, good evening to you and your colleagues. Mr. Kearney, I wish you contentment in your future activities, hopefully for many years to come. John P. Malamo, twenty-four oh-two Eagleview Drive, Bel Air, Maryland. After the public hearing on Bill twenty-four sixteen, Council President Vincent, you approached me and asked, what was the name I called you? Sir, I did not call you a name. You inferred that I did. After listening to the video clip with Ms. Catherine Anne, the arbiter of all issues that ever were, are now, and ever will be, we both concluded that I did not call you a name. You asked for a copy of my comments that I gave you reluctantly. Now, you've got those, you've obviously looked at the video. If you can tell me what name I called you, I'd appreciate it. You can get back to me, or we can get together. Now, at last week's council legislative session, during Agenda Item sixteen, comments from council members, two members engaged in a rather animated discussion on a topic of no great consequences. That discussion reflected on the entire council, and it revealed and displayed the council's character. Imperious, impetuous, obtuse. You undermine your own credibility by your own actions. I know there's a steady procession of residents to these chambers challenging your credibility. Let me offer that it is your actions that form the basis of those challenges. I wish you all a safe and happy summer, and I'll see you in the fall. Good night.
Thank you, sir.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
Sir, you and I can speak after this meeting, but you had to sign up before. I don't guess you knew that. But we will talk. Um, business from council members. Um, Mr. Guthrie?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just a couple of points. Wednesday, last Wednesday, a number of us, Tony, Gene, Pat, and, and Jim, we, we attended the inaugural Hall of Fame, Sports Hall of Fame induction ceremony, and I'm, I'm sure most of us, including myself, did, because Dick Slusky, who was on this council for a number of years, um, uh, was being a, giving one of them sports awards, and was great to see him, and, uh, it was great to see the video on all these sports people that they were honoring. They had a video of, literally of their life and, and their sports, uh, deeds that they did. And, um, Slusky is, is a, a very impressive guy, and has got some very impressive credentials, and I still wouldn't want to fool him. He's a tough guy, so congratulations to Richard, and it was a very enjoyable evening. Um, also on a Thursday, uh, our, uh, Myers RV opened their big, uh, ribbon cutting, uh, had a big ribbon cutting ceremony on Plaski Highway right there, uh, uh, one, near one-fifty-two. Um, they took over that whole, uh, corner and the property down. They redecorated, redressed it up, and looks very good. They're very doing a good job. It seems to be a lot of activity on, on Route forty here lately, different places, new places opening and, and people fixing up their old places. So we're really, we're glad to see that. Also, um, we attended Charles', uh, his, his retirement party. They threw a little party for Charlie here at, uh, right across down the street here, and, um, uh, it's a pleasure seeing him all the years he's, he's been here. Uh, he's certainly, uh, him and I have had our conversations over the years, and, and, uh, I, I think the reason I came back and all this, I think that's the reason he retiring. But, no, I really thank him for all his help over the years. Um, also on the thirteenth, Southern County Task Force had their community meeting at, uh, the Edgewood Community Center. Um, uh, extremely well, uh, attended, you know, they, they separate the, the, uh, basketball court in half with the, uh, divider, and it, it was filled, it was packed. And, um, county executive comes with his entire staff, and they, they have a big table all across the front. They sit me on the corner, and, uh, um, uh, it has, has all the heads of all the departments, uh, uh, give, uh, give their update and speech on things that, that they've been, been able to do in the southern part of county, um, which is, uh, which is extensive, and we're very happy with it. Um, and then after that, uh, they allow, uh, they had about thirty-some people signed up, like, to hear, you know, to speak, and there was a lot of good, uh, trans, um, transputing words back and forth and about different things that people need in the community, and, uh, we're very happy. It turned out very well. Friday, I attended a Flag Day celebration at, uh, First Harford Square. Uh, the people were getting back together and getting that, uh, uh, Harford Square back, and, uh, they, they hoped to open the pool, and, uh, they, they had a big ceremony, and Cindy Jones, who, she, she, uh, hosted the thing along with Bantam Miller, uh, lady there, who is a, a, a great asset to the community, and I, I like Cindy Jones, and I appreciate her kind words at, uh, at the, uh, at the event. Um, with that, Mr. President, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie, Mr. Pennman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, looking forward, uh, to working this summer. Summer break is here, um, but District B office will continue to work on legislative and district needs, so, uh, feel free to reach out to the office, uh, if something is needed. Uh, this summer, my office will also be partnering with the Harford Community College to host seminars in District B, to meet with businesses and community members, to showcase the workforce trade skills program being introduced by the college. So, look forward to, to bringing that to the county. And, um, Charlie, uh, I'm gonna miss looking out and seeing you there. Uh, I just, I know I've said it before, I appreciate all that you have done for me and the county and your service and commitment. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Thank you, Council President. Um, the citizens of Bel Air, Harford County are relieved for the capture of the killer, uh, for Rachel Warren, and thank Harford County Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Gaylor, and the FBI with the apprehension of the undocumented illegal, uh, person from El Salvador through our porous border. Make no mistakes, if this happens in Bel Air, a relatively low cro, area of crime, it can and most likely will keep happening with the recent influx of dangerous Venezuelan gangs and violence crime. It's something that's not gonna stop. Uh, we need to hold all the people that are responsible for this continued wave of people crossing into the U.S. and our nation's capital. Uh, other immigrants come here, they get work, uh, permits, they get green cards, they're happy to be here, they wanna be model citizens. My girlfriend came here twenty-five years ago, she had a green card. She, they talk to a lot of people, and a lot of people are not happy that people come through this country illegally. They, they prefer that they come, um, you know, get their green card, come through a work permit or something. So, a lot of these people are not happy with what's going on. You just don't hear that in the news, so I'm here to tell you that. Um, nearly one-point-four million undocumented immigrants from a staggering hundred-and-seventy-seven countries traveled through Mexico to the United States from January to May, according to Mexico's National Institute of Migration. So this is Mexico saying that we've had one-point-four million people of a hundred-and-seventy-seven different countries. Um, it's probably the not, last time we're gonna hear something horrific like this. Um, the, the, so, um, I think I talked about, uh, some of that stuff, so I just wanted to bring that point out. Um, Friday, June fourteenth, we did the grand opening of Umi Creative Agency and Gray Matter Consulting, Counseling and Consulting on, uh, Maitland Street in Bel Air. Uh, they work in branding, digital photography, marketing and more, and, um, Gary Matters, accessible personalized mental health care in person or from the comfort of your home, so they do, do that. Um, as Council Member Dionne said, we did the induction of the Harford County Sports Hall of Fame. Um, he mentioned Dick Slusky, and I think Council President will tell you, but, uh, my biggest thrill was meeting Irv Panki, um, and I was able to sit at the football table with Irv Panki and probably talked his ear off for a while, but, um, two-time state wrestling champ, um, he wrestled at Aberdeen with, with Slusky, and said he beat him, and he came back that summer and lifted. But, you know, this guy was a role, you know, this guy was a, a great athlete, and there's, there's a story, um, that a lot of people probably don't know. It's on thirty-thirty on ESPN. Um, one of the football players at Penn State raped a young lady, allegedly raped a young lady. They went to court, and a lot of the football players showed up in support of the player, and this young lady got up and talked about her whole rape story, and, um, Irv Panki, who was all-pro and gonna be in number one or couple top pick in the NFL, knocked on this girl's door and said, I believe your story. Uh, I'm here to protect you. And, uh, she said, you know, I'm afraid to walk around campus. He said, you walk around campus with me, nobody will bother you. Um, so it's a, it's a great story. He believed her, um, and they lost touch, and they got back in touch, I guess, like, thirty years later. There's a special about that, and, um, so, uh, it was great to see that. Uh, Keith Watson, who we honored as wrestling, uh, legend coach, um, earlier this year, and Dr. Chuck Costora put this on. They're hoping to do this every year, hopefully have it grow. Hopefully, they, uh, they're working on some local sports things where they can, uh, get some of the football games streamed li, live or, or broadcast on that, so we're working on that. So, they did put a lot of work in this, and they expect to see it go forward, so. And then I hope everybody has a good summer. Uh, our office will be, obviously, we'll be in the office, we'll be around, we'll be working on some stuff, too. Um, and, uh, I, uh, am a big advocate of the workforce program and the, and the programs that are coming on, and, uh, actually, I think I'm finally getting to meet with, uh...
Dr. Hill.
Dr. Hill shortly. So, thank you, Council President. I, I think that's, uh, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. Mr. Riley?
I just want to, uh, again, express my appreciation for two folks, Kim Spence and Bill Amos, from the administration who'll be retiring. In fact, they're retired already. Um, the two stars that have been helpful to me in my two years here, and then Charlie, of course, uh, I know you from the courthouse, but I appreciate all that you've done. Many years you're here in the council and the two years that I've been here, and look forward to you having a great time with, uh, your precious white back there traveling the United States, and I hope you get those all five-oh for you. Also, I want to say, uh, I want to thank Bo Jarrett. Uh, he put on, uh, he, he wants to rezone his property in Jarrettsville. We had about five-hundred people that went to Jarrettsville Community Center. Couldn't have went better. Probably not good for Bo Jarrett, but as far as the, uh, the, the crowd and everything, everything went phenomenal. We were there for about two hours, and I appreciate the Jarrettsville community coming out and giving me the input of what I should do in reference to, uh, zoning there in, in Jarrettsville. And that's all I got, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Ms. Sodles?
Thank you. Yesterday, I was able to participate in the Harford County Public Library's Summer Reading Adventure kickoff. I was even able to take my two little boys, and they were, in, very much enjoying it. Um, today, I participated in the Harford Academy Golf Tournament, uh, where we were able to raise money for the PTA at Harford Academy. And I will also be hosting a community interest meeting with Harford Community College about Waters Edge Regional Workforce. We will be announcing that date. Um, I'm thinking it will be late July. And, um, happy retirement, enjoy it. Thank you for everything, and everyone have a safe and happy summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. Mr. Bennett?
Hello, um, good evening. First, I just want to, uh, recognize tomorrow is Juneteenth, a celebration of freedom, um, and, um, it's a national holiday, so I wanted to make sure we took a moment to, uh, recognize that. I did attend the Juneteenth celebration at the Ward Y in Abingdon on Friday, uh, which was a lot of fun, and it was just a lot of great vendors and, and music and, um, food, and, uh, but then I had to rush off to the Harford County Rec Council's volunteer dinner. Um, so many people who have served our community for years and years, over a thousand years of volunteer time amongst those who are recognized that night, um, so that was really special. And then, um, I also met with the Abingdon Woods Coalition, um, and with Harford County Climate Action, continuing to look at how do we preserve our green space in our community, um, how do we, uh, take care of our community, um, and that became all the more relevant at our Abingdon, Bellcamp, Perryman Community Advisory Board meeting, uh, when we got to hear firsthand the experience of some of our community members in Abingdon who had their homes flooded out in the most recent big rainstorm. We had nine-and-a-half feet of rain in one family's basement, um, nine-and-a-half feet high, which is just tremendous. Um, uh, what a, uh, a disaster, and, um, you know, so thinking about how we, uh, handle our infrastructure, how we handle our, our requirements for water management, um, you know, these are conversations we have that impact people's lives, and so that's something I'm gonna be looking into throughout the summers, is what can we do as a council to help prevent future families from having to, you know, this, um, uh, father who's having to rip out all of his business from his basement piece by piece himself, 'cause he can't afford to have someone do the deconstruction himself. Just a tremendous travesty, uh, to impact the Abingdon community. So many people, uh, impacted by that. So, working on that this summer to think, how can we help our community, make sure less people have to deal with things like that as we, uh, you know, are impacted by these big storms. Um, and, uh, lastly, I just wanna, uh, wish Charlie a happy retirement. Thank you again. I think we've celebrated you many times at this point, but it's well deserved, um, and it was great to celebrate you at your retirement party, um, and to send you off. So, thank you, Charlie, for all you've done.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Um, Mr. Jan Giordano, you, you forgot something?
Yeah, I'm in denial that you're retiring, Charlie. So, unfortunately, I was out of town, missed your retirement party, so I'm thinking you're still gonna be here, uh, come September, but, uh, um, you know...
Later on.
Yeah, so I, I don't think you're gonna be far, so that's good, but, uh, thanks for your help, uh, thanks for your knowledge. Sometimes you told me things I didn't want to hear, but I, I appreciate hearing them, and I wish you all the best, and I hope you win some poker tournaments.
Thanks. Thank you, Tim. Um, comments from Council President. I, too, attended the Sports Hall of Fame event, the inaugural induction ceremony, and we talked about Coach Slusky, we talked about Irv Panki, and yes, uh, Mr. Jan Giordano was like a little kid, uh, meeting Irv Panki. But also, I want to recognize Mike Atkin for his, uh, recognition for the Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu, uh, Mr. Brown, Bill Brown, who was not there, but his family was there to represent him, Ally Carey, uh, for her, uh, success, uh, in the Olympics, I think, for lacrosse, uh, Abby Gustatus, uh, for her, uh, recognition in rugby, um, Kimmy Meisner in ice skating. Um, but the one that received the most accolades there was Fran Matthews, and, um, she was the, uh, athletic coach at, uh, North Harford, started in nineteen-seventy, and, uh, had a thirty-four-year career there. So, um, extremely, um, represented, well-represented there, uh, everyone loved her, and, uh, they all great, gave a great acceptance speech. And, um, this is just the first eight, so each year, uh, we'll be seeing this again, I'm sure. Um, and then for me, uh, I, I briefly attended the SIAB Golf Tournament yesterday. Mr. Jan Giordano forgot to mention that, too. Uh, always... too. Always a success, sold-out event, and our Cyab brothers do so much good throughout this entire county, representing and, and helping all nonprofits and different organizations throughout this county. So, we appreciate everyone's involvement and all that they do to make each one of these events a successful event. And then finally, Charlie, 28 years of service to the county, 10 years in my time here on the council as the, as the council attorney. I am going to miss your, your wit, your knowledge of music, your ability to understand the law, your institutional knowledge, your wise counsel to me, and look forward to you having a great retirement with Terry. Enjoy your time with your family and your travel. What is it, five days out? Five days back?
Well, I don't have to do five days out, five days back, man. I'll have more time off.
Well, enjoy all your time, and with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting. I'm sorry. Oh.
The sheriff's office.
She lost me.
What happened?
Now, the sheriff's office, the press conference you went to. Ow. I'm sorry. I didn't see. Sir?